We're going to call the meeting north. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Call the roll, Heather.
Member Steele is absent. Member Lineup here. Member Frederick here. Member Billsborough?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Here.
Member Dean? Here. Member Lake?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation. Becca Heaton on the multilingual director presentation. Thank you.
Right, you're welcome. So, for those of you who I have not met before, I am Becca Heaton, and I am the Director of Multilingual Learners for Coldwater Schools. I was told I have a little over three minutes. It's going to be a little bit longer than that, but just sharing with you what is our program all about, what does our population of ML students look like right now, and then also kind of some successes that we had in the last year, and my role as director. So, trying to talk fast to keep it under a timeframe. Here we go. First, our population of Coldwater right now for ML students, we have about 1,100 ML students, multilingual learners, broken down into three categories. So, the first category is students who are currently receiving ML support. We have about 870 kids, because a few more have added in since I created these slides. They are getting services from our ML teachers to improve their academic language so they can become proficient in English. We have a second group of students who are monitored. They are former English learners. There's 159 of them. They have passed the English language test that is called WEADA, and for four years, according to the MDE, we have to monitor their progress in Gen Ed classes. And we have another group, final group there, fully exited students, students, 103 of them, who are proficient in English, and four or more years ago, they passed the WEADA test. So, they no longer need any sort of support from teachers, counselors. They only, maybe their parents require maybe some native language translation during conferences or letters home, things like that. So, we're still supporting the family in that way. If we looked at our native language breakdown, you'll see that Arabic is still our number one population that we have in Coldwater, followed by Spanish. And then, I'm sure, as you notice in the community, within the last couple of years, Haitian Creole, our Haitian population, has grown tremendously, with 113 students who speak Haitian Creole as their native language, and then a small percentage of students who speak all of these other languages as well. Breaking this down by building, you can see students who are currently receiving support. So, these are students who have not yet tested proficient in English. Max Larson is our biggest population right now, with 50 new young fibers enrolling in our district this year that were multilingual learners. And then, you can see Jefferson, Lakeland, LMS, all the way to the high school, we still have 202 students who we are supporting with English language development instruction. Okay, breaking that down by teachers. So, right now, we have six full-time ML teachers. In a moment, you'll see, we're growing our program, and I'm very happy about that. Rhonda Mackin works at Max Larson as the full-time teacher, and she has three parapros, potentially a fourth parapro, because we could not fill the position that we had posted for another full-time ML teacher at Max Larson. Jefferson, Sandy Reichert, works with two ML paras. Lakeland, Elena Soprinsky, in one para. At LMS, we have two full-time teachers, Austin and Rema. We have three full-time paras, one per grade level. And then, we also have 12 sheltered content instruction teachers, which we also have at the high school as well. So, 24 teachers in our secondary level. They are Gen Ed teachers, and they've done SIUP, or best practices for ML students, training with me, and they're taking the content of English, and science, and history, and math, and trying to make it more accessible to our multilingual learners. So, we have those teachers working with our newcomers and our beginner students at both the middle school and the high school level, because when you get to the high school, you have to not only learn English, but you're also trying to earn a diploma. So, they have to be able to take content classes, and these teachers are helping them with our content instruction. We have a big celebration. Last year, we take a WEADA test. So, our multilingual learner students take a WEADA test every year. The WEADA is their English proficiency test. That's what Michigan has as their standard for are we improving and growing in our language. 69 students tested proficient on this test in Coldwater Schools last year. If you notice, 42 at Lakeland. That is a huge success, and that goes to show that our elementary programming is working. Second language acquisition research shows it takes five to seven years to learn a language. So, if we imagine the young fibers coming in, 50 of them this year, by the time they get to Lakeland, fourth and fifth grade, that's about five years of learning a language. Hopefully, we continue to see this trend. And then, a big success at secondary was 15 students at the high school also tested proficient on this test. A lot of times, when you've been taking this WEADA test, it's a four-day-long test. You've been taking it for 10 years as a student, you're like, I don't care about this thing anymore. Just let's get it over with. So, I polled a group of students for the last two years into my focus class when I was still teaching, and for about a month, we worked on explicit instruction in English, specifically writing and speaking, and that really helped this group of students to pass that test. So, we hope to continue to see this kind of growth and proficiency with a lot of the program that we have. So, what do I? I am the Director of Multilingual Learners. In the past, starting last year, I was part-time. With your board approval, thank you, I have become full-time. Last year, I taught half-day at CHS, three classes plus the focus I was talking about, and now I can devote my full time into this role. And so, here are some things that I do as the Director of ML Students here in Coldwater. So, first, I work, and I make sure that we have a viable curriculum, that our instruction is instruction that is rigorous, and that it is something that is research-based. We do a lot of SIUP strategies. You'll see this word right here, SIUP. And I train teachers in this model. It's just best practices for ML students. So, one of my goals right now is to create a four-year plan for our students. We don't have enough teachers right now that are endorsed as English language learner teachers, but you'll see in a moment, we have a plan for that, and I'm making sure that in the next four years, we do have enough people in place to service all of our students in our growing population. I observe ML classrooms, and I coach teachers in those best practices. I provide professional development for new teachers in our district, and then I lead PLCs and create model lessons for teachers to use with their students, because sometimes taking on a new classroom can be difficult, especially when we're working with our newest and our beginner students. Teachers are a little apprehensive, and I just kind of break down those barriers for them and give them strategies that are really just good for all students. Next thing I'm working on, this was really big on my heart last year, as a half-time Director, I didn't feel like I had all the time I needed to devote to this, but just making sure that our families are supported. So, a lot of our families, parents don't speak English as their first language, and they might be completely illiterate in English. They need support a lot of times. So, we hired three bilingual liaisons in Arabic, Spanish, and Haitian Creole, who I direct their workload, helping them to figure out what documents need to be translated, what parent phone calls need to be made, or do they need to meet with parents in meetings, conferences, et cetera. And two really big things that I'm excited about this year is that in October, we're going to have a K-12 event where all ML families can come and just learn about school. Okay, how do you get into Skyward? How do you connect with principals and their newsletters? What are some of the processes and procedures in place in each building? What is PBIS? How can your students get these PBIS points? So, we're going to host that event with our liaisons translating for us at the middle school. You guys are all invited if you would like to come on October 11th. Another big thing that I'm working on this year, starting at CHS, is I'm working with the counselors to build an ambassador program. A lot of times, students come into the schools, their first day at school, they are nervous, they also don't speak the language. Or they're a Gen Ed student, they're just nervous. So, we're trying to build this ambassador program so that we have a student team that leads them around, takes them on the tour, gives them the rules and the processes and procedures, and it's just kind of like a welcoming face to them. So, we are starting this, we just sent out the application probably tomorrow to our high school students. Okay, two more things as part of my role, and then I'm wrapping up my speech here. I am growing our team. So, I have formed a partnership with Western Michigan University, and our 15 teachers in our district got a scholarship from Western Michigan to cover half of their tuition cost, and we are using our Section 41 bilingual grant money as the other half of their tuition. By the summer of 2026, or the fall of 2026, next year, they will either get their endorsement in TESAL, teaching English to speakers of other languages, or their master's degree. So, right now, we only have six full-time teachers that are endorsed to teach our ML students. We will then have 21 teachers once they complete this program. And with funding right now, I'm a little nervous, but I really hope that this is something that we can sustain in the future as well, because we're growing our program to meet the minimum number of minutes that our students need. So, I've been working with those teachers as they've been going through this program to either earn their endorsement for their masters. I'm also working with a lot of the content instructional teachers at LMS and CHS, and then I also support our six full-time ML teachers as well. And then, finally, I work a lot, kind of in administrative role, with people accounting, working closely with Julie Fitch. We had 150 new enrollments, because we just had two more students come into our district. So, when they come into our district as an ML student, they have to take a WEADA screener. So, what is your language level? What can you do in reading, writing, speaking, and listening? And then, from there, we can schedule them into their classrooms. We can put them into a high school schedule based on their transcripts, and then we can get them accounted for in the state of Michigan as a student who is an ML student. So, I work on that process at the beginning of the year that takes a lot of time for every student to get enrolled in our district, and then the process of WEADA testing them begins second semester. So, we actually give this WEADA test for the months of January, February, March, and April in the second semester, because of our 860-some students, they all have to take this four-day test. So, that's a big timeframe of spanning out and trying to get everybody tested, and we are always successful in getting everybody tested. And then, I get to work with this man right here, Mr. Gary Dancer, in trying to make sure that we're fiscally responsible with our state and federal grant funding, that we're spending it so that we are helping our students and we're supporting our families. So, that is my role as the ML Director, and I forgot to start my stopwatch, but I was told I had less than 10 minutes, so I think I timed it out to be under 10 minutes.
That was a magnificent presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Lisa.
Do you have questions?
I think you alluded to the fact that it takes them about five years to...
Five to seven.
Four, seven. Are younger students quicker at picking up a language?
So, everything about second language acquisition is that little brains are a sponge, and as you get older, that like the plasticity of the brain starts to become less so that you can take on a language. But, I mean, if we don't come in as a high schooler at 15, that can be really challenging. If we come in anywhere in the younger grades, we usually can get our students to show growth and proficiency. But yes, our little ones are the ones that truly like... By Lakeland level, 42 students are proficient in English. That's like the magic gears for us.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
And I also was going to ask you about how many students had certain different languages, but you covered it.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. Next, we have requests for public participation forms. I have two. Is there anybody else that would like to address to the board? Macy Portzies, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Macy Paratus. I'm a senior at Coldwater High School. I'm a part of my school's NHS and NAHS, and at the Career Center, I'm a part of the Health Science Department and the NTHS. I'm here to talk about gymnastics. I really feel like we could benefit from a gymnastics team. Last year, I was one of the captains of the gymnastics team, and over the past three years, I feel like it's been a really great opportunity to learn and grow as a student and as an athlete. I started a petition a week ago, and currently it has 450 votes, or 450 signers, and I just want to make sure that our community realizes how important gymnastics is to our school and to our students. And as a senior, I'm eligible for the I-8 scholarship if I have, oh, I-8 scholarship if I have two varsity sports and a certain grade point average, and currently that's at risk if I don't have gymnastics as my second varsity sport. So, I just want that to be considered. Why is that part of my risk? Because there's a coaching shortage, but I also feel like there hasn't been that great of an effort to find a coach, so I just like that to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brianna Portzies.
Okay, so, thank you for hearing out my daughter. Came here to help support her in her quest to help find a gymnastics coach. This is important, and I understand that, you know, coaching shortages are difficult, it's difficult to find people. I'm an HR manager myself, and I understand what it's like to try to find qualified people to hire in roles. I do want to point out, though, that, you know, if our football coaching staff resigned, that we wouldn't just let the sport die. We would pounce a pavement and try to find somebody to replace those coaches. As far as gymnastics, if you didn't have a chance to read Macy's petition, I'd be happy to forward that to you. It's got some great comments on there, even from Kim Nichols, the former gymnastics coach, who pointed out a lot of the achievements that the gymnastics team has met over the last 50 years, and also their contributions back to the community. I'm not sure if you all know this, but they've raised over $150,000 over the last several years for the cancer center here in Coldwater. I have been in touch with several people in the community, and it's my understanding that the assistant coach from last year was not even contacted to become the head coach until last Tuesday, when my daughter launched her petition. There's rumors all over town about the sport will be replaced with competitive cheer and some other items. I'm not sure the truth of that, but I just wanted to make sure that we raise awareness about the need to continue the sport. I also have a few concerns as a hiring manager about the posting itself. It appears that there is requirements for two varsity, two years of coaching varsity sports, as well as, as well as a certificate from MHSAA that is noted on the posting. Both of those requirements are not on other coaching positions that are currently posted, and so, to me, that's kind of a red flag as a hiring manager, HR person, that perhaps we're making that posting a little more difficult to find somebody, and perhaps trying to not find somebody, I don't know. I would hope that the school would look into succession planning and helping to bring up new and upcoming coaches with support and mentors from other people who are passionate about the sport. I'm sure that people like Kim Nichols would step in and help mentor for a few weeks if needed. I know Danielle Kelly has a history with gymnastics. Maybe you need to move talent to the sport. That's what I would do in my organization. If I had a gap, I would move talent to the need. So, thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out directly to me.
Thank you very much. Disagreements, allegations. Approval of the minutes from August 25, 2025. Your motion.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of agenda additions and deletions?
We have two additions that we'd like to bring tonight. The first action item is a recommendation to approve the district's contribution toward the cost of an energy analysis at the Dr. Robert W. Brown Aquatic Center in cooperation with the city. This, I believe I've given you some background information before, is about the heating system.
Geothermal?
Yeah, the geothermal system that, as I understand it, has never worked correctly.
Right.
And the second action item is a recommendation to approve the proposal from Aquatic Source for a new mobile lift chair for the Robert W. Brown Aquatic Center. The one that is currently there is broken and is a stationary one, so it's fixed to the deck, where this one would be mobile and would be able to be used in both pools and in different locations.
Okay. Thank you. Communications?
I receive none.
Personnel recommendations?
Personnel recommendations. As it's relative to support staff, the Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ James Dostal II for the part-time lunchroom supervisor position at Coldwater High School, effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Samuel Bernard for the part-time behavior support position at Max Larson Elementary, effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Valentina Shari for the part-time Spanish parent liaison, effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Hannah Ahmed and Amajwa Alakri for the part-time sub-supervisor positions at Max Larson Elementary, effective immediately upon board approval. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ David Felton for the full-time lead maintenance position for Coldwater Community Schools, effective September 23, 2025. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Joel Segura for the full-time maintenance and ground support position for Coldwater Schools, effective September 29, 2025. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Dee Van Arsdale and Blair for the part-time sub-paraprofessional position at Max Larson Elementary, upon board approval and successful background check. And relative to extra duty assignments, the Board of Education approved the recommendation to employ Matt Houts for the extra-duty position of varsity boys bowling coach, effective upon board approval and successful background check.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the August accounts for payment and financial statements. The, Mrs. Frederick.
The resolve that the following accounts for August be approved for payment as follows. General fund accounts in the amount of $2,460,623.91. Special revenue accounts in the amount of $172,152.91. The resolve that general fund financial statements be approved as presented.
Thank you. Next, you won the upper opportunity to have acceptance and approval of gifts.
Recently, the administration was made aware of the following gifts offered by the donors listed above. Recognition and approval for acceptance of the gifts are being sought. A handful of Good, Better, Best grants. One for $350 to Aubrey Brantley at Max Larson Elementary. One to Mariah Johnson at Lake Middle School for $500. One to Mary Ellen Snyder at Lake Middle School for $450. One to Chelsea Wilbur at Coldwater High School for $400. And one to Allison Wyant at GSRP for $350. Additionally, Snyder &amp; Sons Excavating LLC gave monetary funds for purple football jerseys in the amount of $3,665 to Coldwater High School Athletics. Southern Michigan Bank Trust gave monetary funds for purple volleyball jerseys in the amount of $793 for Coldwater High School Athletics. Doug and Mary Jo Johnson gave monetary funds in the amount of $50 to the Fred Hobart Memorial. Reggie and Autumn Ivy gave monetary funds in the amount of $100 to the Fred Hobart Memorial. And Walmart Distribution Center of Coldwater gave 30 boxes of school supplies to all the district buildings. The gracious and continued support of the donors listed above is sincerely appreciated. We ask that the board accept the gifts noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. The resolve, the Board of Education very quickly accepts these gifts as presented. The further resolve, the letter of appreciation on behalf of the board is sent to the donors indicated above, giving worthwhile and generous gifts.
Thank you very much. That is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. So moved.
And there was a second.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Billing reports. Anybody wish to add anything to their report? I mean, Dr. Hope, you could talk about AMR or something.
We had a fantastic homecoming week last week.
Okay. Director of curriculum and instruction.
I put the spring 2024-25 comparison in just for you, so that you could see that we were maintaining the kids that were scoring proficient or advanced, before increasing that in all of our buildings.
Nice work. I like seeing that.
You mean...
In the LA.
In, oh. I was going to say in most of the category.
There's an "as." Can you do math in it too?
Yes. Math is in there.
We didn't have any board committees, did we?
No.
Superintendent report.
This one, today, we had an Aquatic Center committee meeting looking to sell the inflatable Whippet, the big inflatable thing that was purchased many years ago, due to size, lack of use, storage, the need for multiple lifeguards, but mainly for storage, and lack of use. The energy analysis, which will be an action item, is in cooperation with CBPU to look at the geothermal heating system and see if that, what it would take to get that fixed. The proposal for the new lift chair, again, mobile instead of fixed, which is going to be beneficial, because it can be used in both pools and where it is now, creates a blocked line of sight for some of the lifeguards. And then, looking into diving boards, whether we should buy new or look to get them refurbished. I have a meeting with one of the coaches tomorrow, and we'll talk about that, but there's a company that will refurbish them, but you have to make sure that there's no... I'm learning a lot about diving boards. You have to make sure that there's no superficial cracks or anything, or refurbishing won't work, so we're getting those diving boards looked at as well. Health clinics have started the process. They've got the funding, the grant funding, and they've worked with TNP architecture to design upgrades to our health clinics, and we're closer to the beginning of those projects starting. State and federal budget concerns, it's really, that's the, that's the part nobody wants to talk about. Here we are, 22 days into the month of September. We're eight days, nine days away from a potential state and federal government shutdown. The projections at the, at the conference last week were not very positive. For whatever reason, people may think, they believe that a shutdown is going to happen, and if that happens, how are we set as a district to continue operations, and how long can we do that? Even if, say, on the 10th of October, they pass a budget, the next state aid payment day is October 20th, and we're not sure if there's enough time between the 10th and the 20th to get the budget proofread and approved by all the different committees before it's signed by the governor in order to get that October state aid payment out in time. Michigan Association of School Board, or for school business officials, sent out a survey, and of the respondents, they said, and I'm going to get the number wrong, so don't quote me, approximately 46% of the school districts in the state said that they could operate until Thanksgiving, until they're forced to either take out loans or make the terrible decision to close down schools. We are not in that position. We are better off than that, not by an awful lot, but we are better than most, I would say. So, again, commending Rochelle and our business office in everything we do, and we're doing all of the, all of the little things to make sure we're watching every penny, not adding people or programs until we know about funding, waiting until due dates before paying bills instead of paying them weeks in advance. But it's, it's a very uncertain time for all of us, and we're hoping that the legislator will, legislature will pull it through, and there's not a closure of the, of the state. But I'm not holding my breath. With that said, again, I think, I think we're in a good situation as a district. Federal funding, the federal government's in the same position. The US House recommended a resolution to keep operations going until November 21st, but last Friday, the Senate rejected that proposal. but last Friday, the Senate rejected that proposal. So there's still no movement on the federal front. However, most of the funds that are dedicated to schools through title money have already been allocated to schools. So that's a positive for us. But we're gonna keep an eye on it every single day, because we get dozens of emails on it every single day, and I know that we have all the organizations that are working for us. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the conference. The theme this year was the power of impact, and what an impact each and every single one of us can have on kids and programs in our district. I specifically looked at breakout sessions on risk management with SATSA, equitable funding for English learners, which talked about state and federal funding and how we can advocate for more. Time management, especially on a day-to-day basis. And then we wrapped up the entire week by the MASBO's presentation on the budget, which, again, not, right now, not very optimistic. So, that is, any questions on my report? Sorry to be a downer, but it is what it is.
It's a realistic statement.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any discussion items?
No.
We'll move on to the action items. The first is a recommendation to approve the subscription for aptug rooms. The administration is requesting board approval for a one-year subscription to aptug rooms, a communication platform provided by aptug, which is a current provider for the district website services. Aptug rooms will enable the district to communicate more efficiently and effectively with students and their families. Currently, the district is using Remind for staff to student and staff to student family communication. Aptug rooms will replace the district's annual subscription to Remind for communication services. Total cost of the proposal for aptug rooms is $15,865, which includes a one-time implementation fee of $3,700 and an annual fee of $12,165 for 12 months' service. The full proposal is included in this report for the board perusal. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the one-year subscription for aptug rooms for a total cost of $15,865, which includes one-time implementation.
Turn that again. I'll help you. I have a speech therapist.
Implementation fee of $3,700 and an annual subscription cost for services, $12,165, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
Is there any problems right now with Remind?
Remind is difficult in the fact that you have to send out invitations to the people that you want to take the code and put in the code, so you create a group that way. Rooms works with our student information system, which is Skyward, that teachers or coaches can create their own groups. Say, second hour math class, I can create a group and I can push those messages out to teachers, students with, or to parents and students without having them put in a code and do everything else. So it's much more user-friendly on our part, and it, it eliminates that need for the parent to go on and, and sign up for it, they're already signed up for it.
Okay, thank you. So when the student moves from, at the elementary level, from one grade to the next, a teacher, they won't have to re-sign up for, with that teacher, or does the teacher do that?
The teacher creates new groups each year.
Okay.
But because it's tied into Skyward, yeah, so it will just, it could, the messages from third grade to fourth grade will come from a different teacher, and it's two-way communication. But this way, the parents don't have the teacher's cell phone numbers or the coach's private cell phone numbers and those type of things, which helps protect both sides as well. Yep. But if a kid were to change from third hour math to fourth hour math, and I had him in third hour, Skyward updates every night at midnight, and so that student would be removed from that list automatically.
Good.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the work authorization with AR Engineering. The administration is requesting board approval for work authorization from AR Engineering, Civil Engineering, and Surveying for the Site Visit for an assessment of the existing conditions of various parking lots owned and operated by the district. The assessment will determine the potential project scope and provide an assessment narrative improvement maps and the engineer's estimate for budgeting. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the work authorization with AR Engineering, Civil Engineering, and Surveying for an assessment of the existing conditions of the various parking lots owned and operated by the district in the amount not to exceed $7,500, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
Is this just an estimate that we're paying for?
This is, this will be the report of the conditions of all of our parking lots, so they'll take core samples and give us a report of what are the most needy, and then we'll be able to decide as, first with the Building and Grounds Committee, and then at the Board, which projects that we want to take on, hopefully this next summer, which parking lot repairs can be taken out of sinking fund money, so it won't come out of the general fund, this will come out of the sinking.
Does this include the possible addition for Jefferson's parking area?
That, that project will be, yeah, yeah. So this is the, the analysis of what our current parking lots are. Yeah, the, the additional lane, if you will, at Jefferson is certainly something that we want to put toward the top of the list to get done next summer.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the district's contribution towards the cost of energy analysis at the Dr. Robert W. Brown Aquatic Center of the City of Coldwater, and its Energy Waste Reduction Department have hired E3M Solutions in Grandville, Michigan to conduct an energy analysis at the Dr. Robert W. Brown Aquatic Center. The total cost of services is $14,000. The City of Coldwater will pay $9,000 of the cost. Administration is requesting board approval for the district to pay the remaining cost of $5,000 for the analysis service. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the district to pay the remaining cost of $5,000 for services provided by EM Solutions in Grandville, Michigan. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
What's the end goal here? Seems like we've had this report done before.
The, the end goal is the status of our geothermal system, which we believe has never worked correctly. And the story, and the story I was told was that the builders or the implementers blamed the software company, the software company blamed the installers or the company, but it was so many years ago, nobody really knows for sure. So instead of taking on the cost ourselves as the entity in the contract that's responsible for all repairs and maintenance to the, to the facility, the city has offered to pay more than half of that cost as part of their energy waste reduction.
Since they own the building.
Correct.
This would be their responsibility in most situations, except we have an agreement.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Is this something we can build the Brown family more?
We can, yeah, this can be taken out of the funding, but we also have, we also have money in the, in the fund.
I don't want to spoil.
But yes, we can.
Build the Brown family, we want more money. Thank you. So but ultimately, what is our, what's the goal? Because I mean, we all say, we all know it doesn't work, so.
You have to replace it.
To, to either replace or to get, to get it working, whether it's, if it's, if it is the software or whatever, so that we have a better heating system. Currently, the heating system that we have is in dire need of repair, and we've just been blessed with good weather right now.
And they think it's a software problem?
They think it could be.
Okay.
That's why we're bringing in this company.
That was all the rage at the end when they put it in, when it was supposed to be awesome, absolutely fantastic.
Well, but it was discovered that maybe it wasn't so good for pools.
All right.
But they knew they were putting it into a pool.
Wow.
But this way, the committee, the committee feels that we'll at least have a solid answer at this point, meaning the building's what now, 15 years old or 13 years old? And, and believe, believe it's time to have an answer.
Okay, anybody else have a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the proposal from the Aquatic Source for the new mobile lift chair for the Dr. Robert W. Brown Aquatic Center. Administration's requesting board approval for the proposal of an Aquatic Source for a new mobile lift chair for the Dr. Robert W. Brown Aquatic Center in the amount of $16,955.40. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the proposal for the Aquatic Source for a new mobile lift chair. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, the, next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, October 27.
Sorry.
At 2025 at 6 o'clock in the evening at the Administrative Service Center located at 401 Sauk River Drive in Coldwater. And Mr. Billsborough, you have an announcement?
Yeah, I have a comment. As terrible as it was to hear about that near tragedy, tragedy last Wednesday, I want to make a comment about the response of our superintendent and our administration to that incident. Apparently, Mr. Flynn was attending a superintendent's conference at the time when this happened, and before he returned home, he did something unexpected, yet totally appropriate. He inquired about resources that might be available to our schools regarding teaching or reteaching bicycle safety. Apparently, our principals at Lake and Lakeland are also involved in this effort. In addition, there are efforts to find grant money to provide bicycle helmets for our kids. So as I say, these are totally appropriate responses to what happened last Wednesday, yet they are responses that could easily have been ignored by another administration. So I want to thank Paul, Jacob, and Sarah for what you're doing to help prevent another such occurrence of an accident like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Billsborough. Next, we have the request to conduct executive session pursuant to PA 267, Section 8A, for the purpose of considering a periodic personnel evaluation of an employee. This requires a vote, call and vote. Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Other?
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsborough?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Steele is absent. Member Lake?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are in closed session.